Thank you for coming to the Board of Selectmen meeting for March 30, 2023. It is 6:18 PM and we're going to start our meeting. So everybody's aware, we're recording via Zoom. It's also being livestreamed Facebook and WCAT 12, which is our local access network, is also televising it and recording it. If anybody's recording the meeting, please let us know besides us and we can let everybody else know. Can I please have everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. So first thing on our agenda is a report from the Cemetery Commission about the stone service reset and the water line repair. Hello?
Hello.
Just so everybody is... just so everybody's aware, when you talk, we need you to say who you are, your full name, and what your position is with the town. If you're a resident, you're a resident. If you're police chief, you're a police chief, okay? That is because of requirements with social media.
Grab a stand or can I sit?
You can sit or stand, whatever you feel more comfortable with.
Cynthia Baxter, Cemetery Commission Clerk. We have some really exciting things going on at the cemetery, so that's what I want to talk to you about today.
Very good.
We have spoken with a gentleman from Gravestone Services of New England and sometime after the 8th of April, I think like two days after the 8th, he's going to start resetting 39 stones in the Founder's section. We're going to have a meeting, or the Cemetery Department is going to have a meeting up at the cemetery on the 8th, and we're going to pick out 39 stones that we want reset. The resetting includes those that are tipping, those that are laying face down. So we're going to pick 39 stones and within two weeks, he should have that all finished. He's going to lift the stones, he has a crane, just a small crane, he'll lift the stones, he'll put peat stone around there, make it all nice and solid, and then he'll clean the lichen off the stones because it's corrosive. So we're excited about that. That money's going to come out of Perpetual Care. I've spoken with the Treasurer, it's $9,750 for 39 stones, which is really very inexpensive. We did have an issue where we had to take care of a stone and the company charged us 500 off and 500 back on foundation. So this person is going to handle these stones, he's been business for 15 years now, and it's more of a, it's almost like a calling rather than a job. He really likes doing it, so we're excited about that. And then we're going to continue it again next year. This is going to be something that we're going to work over many, many years, because I don't know if you've seen the Founder's section, but it's really, really been abandoned, more or less. There are some stones that just we've lost completely, but, so we're really excited about that and that's going to be pushing us forward in a good way and it's not costing the town any, any money at all, it's from Perpetual. So we're really excited about that. Also, we have the water main, we need to replace a water line from the Pine Grove entrance on Pine Grove Ave up to the water tower. I found out today from the Treasurer that you have to use that money differently, it comes from the PLOT fund, so we have to put that on a special town meeting or annual meeting. So thus far, we only know that it's going to be 500 feet of piping at a dollar a foot. So I'm trying to get ahold of Jeremy to find out if there's any additional costs so that we'll have a, we'll have a fairly accurate number. We'd rather ask for more than less and then only use what it is we have to use, but it's actually coming out of a fund that's already there, so it won't come from the pockets of the townspeople, it's money that's already there. We've also contacted someone about crack sealing because there's a lot of cracks in the newer area going down the hill. We've spoken to Jeremy about this, but it's, I'm not certain that he's going to be able to do that for us or with us. So we've checked with someone on crack sealing and that doesn't seem to be too bad a price, so we're hoping to be able to entertain that with some of the funds we have in our supplies. But because the water runs downhill and as it runs downhill, it gets into the cracks, it erodes it, and we're going to end up with a much bigger mess. So there's two sections that we're looking at. We actually had 10 things on our, on our goals and we've, we've got five of them in process now and one complete, so we're doing very well. Also, we were looking into surveying the cemetery for more lots, you remember we had discussed that? And just today, Steve Crystal sent me a contact that he had, and Charles Parker from BL Company, and they do this kind of surveying, so he's going to make an appointment to come out in the next couple of weeks, give us an estimate in an area just so that we know how much we're looking at for future, you know, to see if we can possibly get that taken care of. And really exciting is the Munson, I've been in contact with the Munson Cemetery Superintendent down there, I have a stone in Munson, and he actually is going to put together a seminar. They earn, they get some money from economic development funds to learn how to reset and clean stones. So they're going to be having a seminar and inviting the surrounding communities to come out and help them. And when we help them, we're going to learn how to do it ourselves. And then they're also going to come up with a core group of members from other communities, cemetery people from other communities that will continue to meet with them monthly and come up with, find new things that are, that are going on and new things that we can access and do, so.
Very good.
So we're, we're really, we're doing well. We're really, we're really excited, so.
Great job.
I just wanted to come and tell you something good and not complain, although we do have some issues with some trees, you know, and...
There's a lot of trees there that need to...
Yeah, there are, and, and we're concerned because some of them are in the Founder's section, dropping huge branches, so we're going to try to...
And Highway is not able to help you with some of them?
Well...
Those that are over stones?
Yeah, they are, but I, I think, and in fairness to Jeremy, he wants to take care of people's property, the live people, over the, those that have passed on, so I understand that. So we're going to see if there's any way that we can possibly handle just some of it ourselves, but you know what our budget is, it's, it's very small, but I think we've, we've done well with what we have. So if, my thought is if we could just take the ones off that side that are dropping and let the tree reshift and settle itself, but they're old trees, but, you know, I'd rather take the tree apart a little at a time than not take it down at all or, you know, but we're, so we're looking at that, but...
It's hard to read with trees sometimes.
But the Board wanted me to let you know that we are having, we have some concerns with some of the trees right up along the front of the Founder's because they are, you know, we're going to be repairing stones.
Yeah.
And I sound like Sylvia Buck, we're repairing stones and we don't want to have to repair the stones again that we're repairing. So we're going to make sure when we put the, when we choose the stones that we're going to fix this time, we're probably going to choose them away from a danger zone.
Yeah.
And see what we can achieve by next year to, to be able to, you know, make it a safe area over there.
Some of those trees are going to, you're going to need a crane to grab the branch and remove it because you don't want it just free dropping down into stones and stuff. So it's kind of specialized work to do. I would recommend getting an estimate.
Correct.
Of what it's going to cost and figure something out. We always do.
Yeah, we'll do that, we'll, we'll get a couple of different estimates and see what we can find out. And that's on our, that is on our agenda for our next meeting is to discuss that because it's, it's something that's got to be done, but...
Yeah, especially if you're going to have to reset the stone, you're resetting the stones, you don't want branches that come down and ruin the work that you just paid for.
Right, absolutely, so, okay.
I have a question.
Oh, I knew you were going to ask me a question, I hope you can answer it.
When, were you anticipating doing the water line?
Well, we want to have that done before Memorial Day.
Okay.
So we're, we're, you know, it's kind of the balls in Jeremy's court, we, he did get the estimate for us and I sent him an email saying, you know, we want this done before Memorial Day, so I'm hoping...
Do you have an article on the warrant?
For, not yet, because I didn't know that we had to do that. See, it's, this is like a learning curve because the Commission has never had to access those funds before, and I had spoken to Dawn several times about it, but she never said anything about having to put it on special. So by Monday, I'm twisting Jim's arm to wait and give me till Monday to be able to give a number, because we, we really don't know. All we know at this point is it's $500 for the, for the pipe. Now, I've, I've heard that Mr. Fouton might have to be contracted to pull the pipe through the existing pipe, what that cost is, I don't know. So whatever estimate we have, we want to make sure that we make it enough to cover...
Just to make sure you have it to us before the 6th?
Yeah, my goal is to do that by Monday. I'm, I'm hoping to be able to get here before he leaves Monday with, with a number because it's got to be done, you know, we've repaid it. The thing is, it's an area that trucks go up in that area, they pull up delivery trucks, oil trucks, gas trucks, they go up there and they... trucks, uh, oil trucks, gas trucks, they go up there and they turn around the cemetery, and they've broken that line a couple of times, and we can't keep repairing it, it's beyond repair at this point. I've asked if we could lock that gate, but then these vehicles would have to back down Pine Grove Ave., and doesn't seem to be a, a reasonable solution. So, we need to replace it, so, and I guess it's a more flexible hose, so it should, should survive. So, but yes, I'll get that to you before the sixth, I promise. My goal is Monday, and I try to meet my goal, so.
Very good, thank you very much. Do you have anything else to add?
Nope, we're working with the Water Department, we're working on the plant, hopefully it's gonna be open, you know, before the end of April, we've got all our staff in place, we're, we're doing the best that we can, and, you know, green light ahead on everything, as far as I know, so. Okay, that's it from me.
Do you have any questions, sir?
I do not.
Do you have any questions, sir?
No, sir.
Mr. Ferrar?
No, sir.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, see you later.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is- Is the discussion impossible vote on the Cummings Pond Public Use Agreement. Okay. Probably should hang up for that one, right? It's the same one as previous years?
Yes.
Do you have any questions?
No, I don't, I mean, if this is the same as in the past-
Same as each year we've done it.
Yeah. I think the only thing that's probably changed is parking, right? There's no more parking.
Yeah, is there parking still, or is that completely gone now?
It's, there's less.
Less parking?
Less parking, and I, I think I was supposed to mention something about, um, isn't there a shed up there or something that's supposed to be repainted?
Well, it's being moved, it looks like.
Being moved.
They're asking that it be painted by the Parks Department. I guess the Parks Department's, when they-
Oh, yeah.
-signed the agreement, said that it was supposed to be maintained and cleaned in good working conditions. According to the memo that we received from Loretta Bowdrey, it says that it's, uh, paint is in disarray.
All right, well, let's make sure Parks gets it painted.
Parks has to sign this also after you guys do.
Do you have any questions?
In the past, I've heard many people asking for if dogs were allowed at Cummings Pond, and I know there's a sign there that said, or there used to be a sign, that there's no dogs allowed there.
Right.
Trying to read these, if, if there was anything here.
No, it's posted out there, you can't bring dogs in.
There you go.
Any other questions?
Just to clarify, the Cummings Pond is not, who's, who's the owner of Cummings Pond?
Water District.
Water?
Water District.
So, the water, the water district is the owner?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And they give permission to Parks and the town to use it for recreational use?
And, and I say this, just because I've seen some comments around saying, why doesn't the town do this, or, you know, do that, and this answered the question, is because we don't own it, we don't-
Right.
-we don't own that place, or, that, that's what I wanted to-
Yeah. Anything else, sir?
That's it, sir.
Mr. Ferrar, do you have anything?
No.
Okay.
Yep.
Make a motion?
Make a motion to accept the Cummings Pond Public Use Agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Eric Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes Yiannas Lee.
All right, Mr. Chairman, um, if we, if we could, um, I know there's a resident here, uh, Mr. J- John Allen Gina, um, is here, and maybe we could, uh, take that item out of order?
Sure.
'Cause I, I would anticipate the budget in the warrant articles could be a lengthy discussion.
Mm-hmm.
I do.
That wasn't numbered. Okay.
Number three?
Yeah, these are hard to read when they're not numbered.
So, you guys-
Sorry, well, I didn't number them because you don't have any backup to it, so there's-
Maybe a bullet or something?
Bullet?
Yeah, something.
All right, I'll put a bullet there.
You guys good, taking that out of order?
Yeah.
It's okay.
All right, next thing on the agenda, out of order, is gonna be a discussion of a noise complaint coming from the Senior Center Air Conditioning Unit submitted by, uh, Mr. John Allen Gina?
Yes, sir.
Welcome, sir. Wanna just state your name?
Hi, my name's John Allen Gina, I live over Nineteenth Central Street. Basically, uh, it's about noise, noise coming from the, an old air conditioning system that's right next to my fence, that where I have a picnic table, or I try to have, you know, picnics and outings, but it's been undoable for that, so I end up going to Sunset View and park my camper up there so I can have peace and quiet, which, you know, is okay, 'cause I'm in a campground, but I like to be at home and not have to be up there. Um, and right now, you know, I was thinking of different ways to accomplish that, keep the cost down, and I was thinking about a fence and stuff, a sounding fence, but a, a long fence to keep the noise from him and my next door neighbor could cost a lot of money. And an idea I had yesterday was just come five feet or so away from the unit on three sides, 'cause there's one backed up to the Senior Center, and then put a ten-foot high, roughly, fence around it with, like, say, four-by-fours, like the Mass Pike has, you know, a, all that wood going down the side to stop the houses from getting the noise of the traffic, I don't know if you ever saw that going down. Something along those lines with an access door, so you could change parts, 'cause they're always over there fixing, it's old, would be the least cost-effective and would solve the problem, you know, of us listening to that all summer. It starts roughly, as soon as it gets above seventy, it switches over to cool. I mean, all the win, a lot of the windows on the Senior Center are facing the sun, so it just heats up really good, or bad, I guess, but whatever. That's basically it, noise, and it's just interrupts my life, and, and I've, I've asked a, a couple of years back, and they went over and looked at it, and it's operating as it should, which is too loud.
Is it, like, sound like it's, uh-
Sounds like I'm living in-
A bearing of something going?
No, no, no.
Or it's chirping or something like that?
Absolutely not, nope, it's just a big, big, big fan, it's woof. It sounds like when I used to work at Cascades Diamond, like I'm still sitting in their parking lot listening to all that, and it's just unacceptable. You wouldn't wanna do it, you guys wouldn't wanna come and have a dinner over at my house, that's for sure, 'cause you wouldn't be able to think. I have to yell across the fence, that is, he can't hear me, I can't hear him, and it's just, it's time to move on and get the people happy, because, I mean, I'm trying to retire. It's not so bad in the winter, because it don't run, and I'm inside, or I'm out there. But it's from like spring to fall, late fall, that's it.
Okay.
Thanks for listening, you guys, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Michelle.
No, I guess not, we can look into it.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah. So, you live on Central Street?
I live at Nineteenth Central Street, it's a big-
Nineteenth Central Street, okay.
...white duplex, right off on the roof over and the, and, you know, the, you know-
And the air conditioning is, is not a window unit, it's a-
It's an old square, it has the heating and cooling in it-
Mm-hmm.
And the heating's not so bad, there is a generator that comes on once a week, but that don't bother me. You know, it's, it's the constant drone, it goes into kick-down mode, and it's, it's still pretty loud, but there's like two stages of it, when it's circulating, and that fan, what it does is it, it removes the heat, so the evaporators work properly, and it, it works like it's supposed to, it's just loud. They can't hear it on the inside of the place, 'cause they're in there.
So, Mr. Chairman, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have a, we're gonna visit a couple other places, including the Senior Center with the Building Inspector?
Yes.
So, I, I'll be, we, the Building Inspector and, and the Town Administrator and myself, we're gonna visit the Senior Center next week, or?
Yes.
And I'll personally look at it and, and see-
Well, looking at it's not gonna help you, if it's not on.
I'm an architect, I understand about acoustics and noises and everything, so I'm gonna try to, you know, give a-
All right, well, whatever, I appreciate your-
-give you a, 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 a good solution.
He's the man to design it for you, so, the expert. But, yeah, we can, we'll look at it, um-
Okay.
-see if we can mitigate the sound some way. Um, maybe it might be time, maybe that-
That's a lot of money. I looked into it, to pay for it, to do it, myself. I have a, I would, I was at wit's end with this, you know, I, I, I talked to Jim about it. I don't remember, you know Jim, right? The maintenance guy?
Yep, does he?
Nice guy, and he said, John, it's just old. He said, I go over there, I look at it for you, he said, but, you know.
Well, that, that's the thing about it, too, is maybe we can look at an energy efficient grant, and-
We're talking like fifty Gs.
And get the unit replaced, if we can get an energy efficient grant, if not, we can look at some sort of sound barrier. Mr. Bellis would be able to help you with that, with technologies and stuff and sound barriers. The sound barrier can be done cheap, but we also gotta look at, um, making sure Fire Department has access to it, just in case if there's something.
Another suggestion might be, okay, the, the things that I was thinking about installing in there would have been, and running a raffle for the town to make that, have, have that pay for it. I mean, back twenty-five years ago, when we put that liner in the library over there, I'm the one that put it in there, and they have a little thing on the access channel for donations and stuff, you know, to help the town out, and they got mud and they had to wait to get the money before they could afford me to come in and do it. But Mitsubishi sells electric, nothing runs off electricity and, uh, gas, so they have these units you stick on walls, all over, you could put them all over the place on the inside, and then a small fan on the outside, a handler, that, like I have on my house, you don't hear it. I have one right on my house, yeah.
Yeah, we can look at different technologies and stuff, something-
We can look at split systems, that's a split system, yeah.
Yeah, mini-split.
Yeah. So, we'll, we'll look into it for you and-
Thanks for your time, people.
Thank you.
Thank you a lot.
Yep.
Take care, guys.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is, uh, discussion impossible vote on the budget. All right, what has changed so far?
Just reliability insurance this week.
So, I checked with Joanne, the rates, as, as we discussed last week, had come out, um, uh, this week, the final rates, and basing it upon, uh, a slight increase and anticipating of maybe possibly adding some equipment throughout the course of next fiscal year, it was recommended to budget for one hundred and fourteen thousand for general liability. The chubs in the workers' comp, uh, is fine at the forty-six thousand dollars. Um, I would anticipate the liability to maybe come in a few thousand dollars less, um, but depends on what, whether or not we add any additional equipment that may need to be insured throughout the course of next fiscal year.
Okay, so we had a, a decrease in liability, okay, and an increase in-
Workers' comp.
Workers' comp.
And chubs, that includes the injured on duty.
Did we have a lot of claims of workers' comp?
No, it's just-
Like this is fifty percent increase?
It's just, you know, they've gone up throughout the-
Shared expense.
Yeah, throughout the whole state, throughout the whole system.
Very. Nothing else has changed.
Yeah, what killed us is that technology stuff.
Technology-
All the-
Yes, yep.
The antivirus and the detection stuff.
EDR.
EDR, yeah.
It's a very expensive, um, software package.
No more changes? You have no more changes?
I don't think so.
Any more changes, Mr. Bellis?
No, please.
Mr. Ferrar?
I didn't, I don't see anything, no.
So, this is our set budget now?
This will be, um, well, yes, this will be what is what the FinCom will have, yeah, and they'll bring it back to you.
Yep. Okay, so let's do a vote, then. We're not making any more changes.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept the, uh, Selectman budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Eric Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye, the motion passes Yiannas Lee. The Selectman's budget is set. Send it off to review to FinCom. Okay. Discussion impossible vote on the warrants for the Select Board. Okay.
So, the first, um, articles are the, um, Special Town Meeting, um, they encompass all of the departments that I've received.
Axion is the body cameras?
Is the tasers.
Tasers?
Yes, I, I'm gonna, I'm going to, uh, edit that and put for taser equipment, to be a little bit more specific in the article.
Okay.
Articles, uh, nine and ten, um, as opposed to using-
Not there yet.
What's that, oh, oh, sorry.
Okay, and Finance Committee recommends all those so far. We don't have a sum for the six?
I should have it by next week, by the time it goes through the books and the County's Office, uh, should have a better, uh, idea. Um, it's looking at, uh, somewhere around the ballpark of twenty-nine, thirty thousand dollars. Um, I'll have a better number next week.
We don't have an item, uh, number for seven yet, right?
No.
Eight, nine, ten, eleven didn't get a recommendation from FinCom?
Um, so, uh, those were added-
The salary?
Those were added before, um, the, the previous FinCom, so, uh, they had met yesterday, um, and, uh, they will be, they have been recommended, um, as of yesterday.
So, they did say yes?
Yes, they did say yes, those have to be updated. Um-
Okay.
Article eleven was added today-
No.
-by the Cemetery Commission.
That's not the water line, that's something else, yeah.
No, that's something else, yeah. It's a interdepartmental transfer, uh, Fin- FinCom has, has, uh, asked that if there's any interdepartmental transfers, uh, that they be done at the special, I sent out a memo to everybody, um, saying, let's get them done at the special, so we don't have to, so FinCom doesn't have to continually meet on those in, in May and June.
Okay. So, good with those? You good with special?
Yes.
You good with special?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and we're looking at annual now. And what do they say on one?
So, um, after a very, um, uh, detailed discussion, um, they have, uh, remember as of last week, they said that they did not recommend.
Mm-hmm.
They have now, uh, pulled their did not recommend to, uh, tabling it, and having a discussion with the select board on Saturday.
It's progress?
Yes.
Okay. Now, three?
Three, um, that is, uh, a regular standard article that has to be placed on-
Yeah, that's always there, yeah.
I think there's a couple more that-
There is a couple more, yeah.
Yeah, that aren't on here.
Yeah.
And then four, this is one we were talking about, is, um, for facilities maintenance manager. And FinCom didn't recommend it because they didn't have a position description? Or they just don't, were they still, or are we tabling that one?
They were, um, they're-
Because they didn't have an answer when I was there.
Yeah, right, the same discussion that they had with Adam is that they're having with, uh, with this position, um, is that they feel as though that, um, even though there was a directive for level services, and we had said that, you know, in order to provide the level services that Adam has, that needs to happen for public safety, and after they are, um, a part of the public safety, um, you know, that they, they feel as though that no position, new position should be added. Um, now, they, they have, uh, based on some significant data that Adam was able to provide, they've pulled their, um, their do not recommend, uh, status on article one away, uh, but they still continue to do not support article four, because they feel as though it has no impact on public safety, uh, and that there should be no new position created.
Okay. And then number six?
Um, we're, I think we're gonna discuss that on Saturday, right?
Yeah.
And we're waiting on seven for specific language?
Yep, so I had sent this out to town council, they are, started their review process of what the articles we have so far. Um, this is again, a, um, a, uh, one that they will have to look at to, uh, to mirror what the exact language that would be required by the state.
Okay. And then this is just the bylaws?
Bylaw changes, yeah.
Oh, so you're gonna just take each change in, into its own article, I guess, huh? Is that how that, yeah?
Right, if they're in different sections of the bylaw.
Yeah, sure, okay.
Number twelve?
Um, so, uh, and still, uh, we'll have some better numbers for the board, um, on Saturday with that.
Okay.
Still working on, on some numbers there. So, um, we don't have a finalized number for that.
And we're adding the senior center into that, along with us, to get them up to par.
I was just trying to see if we could s- expand the, the, you know, the reach.
Yep.
Because we're al- we're almost done with some of the projects here, so.
Yeah, we're doing pretty good, offices are looking good, so.
Okay, so, in the budget, Shepherd Building expense isn't covering any of this in article twelve?
That, that's something different, that's just the utility cost.
Just the general?
The general, you know, the one-
Operation of the building, okay.
The operation.
Pay the electric bill, all that stuff, right?
Yeah, yeah.
It's a sewer article that's normally on there. Article fourteen is, uh, standard for Jeremy DeCheff ninety funds. Article fifteen, um, I did get this back from town council, this is what they had recommended. And, uh, the dollar figure that I had recommended would be twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, for, uh, to start.
Hope that fund?
Hope that fund.
Can, can we just add a summary at the beginning?
Uh, summary of-
Of what this is doing?
Sure, yep.
I mean, it's a lot of like, language to try and like, parse, so just a one sentence, you know?
Yep.
Yeah, because probably gonna get asked a lot of questions on what that is.
Sure.
Yeah. And maybe, I mean, this is, yeah, maybe even the justification, why are we doing this?
Yep.
Because that'll help for people to understand.
And FinCom recommends it, so.
Sixteen is standard.
Yep.
Seventeen standard. Oh, that was withdrawn.
So, that one is withdrawn.
Number seventeen?
Um-
After seventeen.
After seventeen. But the, the town did receive today a citizen's petition, to have the position grade changed. So, if this is a valid petition, then it would have to be put on the town warrant.
Did the town clerk verify signatures?
Yes, she did, yep, yep.
Okay, and then, there you go.
So, it would, you know, it has to still be reviewed by council and everything, to make sure the form's correct.
Yep. All right, easy enough. And cable advisory, that's a standard. Not standard, but it's their money.
No, they, that's a cap increase, yep.
Yeah, it's their money, so it's not like it's-
Yep.
But in the past, haven't, hasn't this board just raised the cap? Or did we al- is this always an article?
No, well, last year we did an, a, a cap raise for the building inspector, that was a, that was an article.
Okay, I thought we did one for the cable-
This is to raise it permanently. Not a one time.
Oh, maybe, okay, that's what it might have been, a temporary.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
And Travis is probably running down to explain to us?
Mm-hmm.
No?
That's all right, we got, yeah.
Okay. All right, twelve thousand for fireworks?
That is what, uh, Parks had requested.
Very good. They do an amazing fireworks display, good job.
Um, article twenty and twenty-one, um, FinCom did talk about it last night.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they would like to get some additional information from Parks. Because as I had indicated to them, you know, a lot of these playscape structures are probably anywhere in the ballpark of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand to three-hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and to make them, uh, compliant with ADA, uh, standards, um, if you're only doing five thousand dollars, you know, a year-
Take your a hundred years to do it.
Take about fifty years to do it.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, Parks, I mean, the FinCom wanted to kinda get an idea if they had a smaller project in mind, or if they have a lot, you know, if they're going after a, an entire playscape, you know, what exactly they're going after and its purpose. Um, so, uh, they wanted to seek some additional clarification before they had, um, issued any type of recommendation.
They might just wanna be starting a capitalization, a capital stabilization account, right?
And usually, as the FinCom had, uh, had indi- indicated, um, Adam, uh, the chief of Lavoie, uh, does a great job with saying, okay, I'm gonna buy the, the SCAB packs, and they're gonna be over three installment periods, and I'm asking, you know, the townspeople to vote, uh, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five thousand, and in, in fiscal year twenty-five, another twenty-five thousand, and then complete the project in fiscal year twenty-six, another twenty-five thousand, that's just an example.
So, you're setting a very high, high standard, not every employee can be Adam.
Well, so, uh, FinCom recognized the efforts that Chief Lavoie does, so, um, you know, they wanted to see something more along the lines of, of that.
Set a high bar for everybody else, thanks, Adam.
And I mean, the other thing is CDBG, that's how we did Dean Park, CDBG grant, so that might, but this could be for the smaller stuff, maybe?
Yeah, I'm not sure what, what she, what the Parks had in mind, if they have, you know, just smaller stuff, or-
Did they ever get us anything for like picnic tables and stuff? Because we talked about that a while ago, where we said we would buy some picnic tables and things like that for them.
And we can, we can do that, um, we just have to kinda ideas as to where they wanna put them.
Right, but we didn't get anything back from them yet?
Um, when we initially met, you know, she said again that she would like to have, you know, like, two or three new, two to three, uh, new picnic tables, um, uh, some-
Yeah, but they gotta find how much it is and which ones, and, you know. I know they were talking about the aluminum picnic tables, but they have to get bids and costs about it.
I'd, I'd like to know specifically what models they're looking for, so, you know, we buy the correct ones.
Yeah, if we could reach out to them again about that.
Article twenty-two is standard, just updating the acceptance of general law.
Could we get an explanation on this one too?
Sure.
Description at the beginning?
Yep.
What, you don't want somebody to just read all through that? Sit back next to their lawyer and have them-
Everybody will go to sleep.
Article twenty-three, we're waiting for, um, uh, language, uh, from DOR.
Mm-hmm.
Article twenty-four is being proposed by the Board of Assessors for upgrading, um, number of, of buildings and dwellings and replacing it with four-inch height facing, uh, the street for signage for, um, numbering of buildings. I think they wanted to light it too. Lighting in, numbers will be put under lighting. So, uh, and article twenty-five will have the actual, uh, bylaw attached to that.
Yep.
Article twenty-six, um, we'll, we'll also have that as well.
Okay. Where are the two I proposed?
Uh, they're not here yet, so, I don't know if you wanted to talk to them about tonight, the audit? Yep.
Yeah. So, we have them in front of me now.
I, I do have them right there.
You have them?
Yeah. So, um, I received a, uh, email from the chair yesterday, um, asking, uh, to talk about putting, uh, two articles on, one, uh, from Free Cash to pay for the, uh, an audit of all the schools for the past five years, and staffing needs, uh, to each school, uh, to meet state and federal standards. And, uh, to change, uh, change in bylaw mandating that all Warren School Committee members shall live in the town of Warren, and that no member of the school committee, uh, can be an employee of the school or be a direct relative of any employee of the school, husband, wife, father, stepmother, stepfather, son, daughter, stepson, stepdaughter, adoptive parent or child, and change any direct relative status by school committee member after an appointment or election will result in immediate removal and replacement by a majority vote of the selectmen. So, for the bylaw change one, uh, they are already required to be a town resident in order to run for that office.
Right, it's elected office, so, you don't need that particular piece of it.
For the remaining part of it, um, you know, I'm, I'm sure we could run that by town council to see, you know, if we can, um, make that requirement. And then for the audit, um, I had mentioned this at FinCom, and FinCom had, uh, recommended, um, that instead of paying for an audit, that they, that the, that the town contact DESI to see if DESI would come in and do an assessment similar to what the DOR has done for our town, uh, and use that as a basis point to start. You could do either one. The audit, um, you know, our audit a year for the town is thirty-two thousand dollars. So, if you're gonna go for five years, um, in a regional school district, I, I would, I would tend to guess that that would be, um, a lot more than the thirty-two thousand, but I can certainly see if I can get some quotes on that.
Yeah, I'd be interested to see what's going on with the finances there and how the money's being spent. Again, we're not accountants, and, um, I think the town is very concerned about how money is being spent at the school, and would like to know better, um, if it's being done correctly, and if there's any type of, um, waste or anything like that, um, within the budgets. And again, staffing, you know, are we staffing it properly? Do we have the right people in the right positions, and, um, are we hiring more than what we need? Uh, maybe we don't need twenty people doing the same position that it only takes five to do. We don't know that, so, it'd be interesting to see if we can get somebody in here to, to look at that and see if there's a way of saving money in that means. So, that's, you know, my concern on it, um, you know, and I think anybody that's on school committee should not be an employee of the school. Uh, the reason why is they can't vote, they get accused themselves. And, you know, especially with budgetary items, because they could be directly benef- benefiting from some, something like that. So, it makes no sense having somebody that can't vote on a committee.
It's a conflict of interest.
It's a conflict of interest, um, and it seems to be happening. So, I think if we put something in a bylaw saying, we can't do this no more, it clarifies that. You know, and give it to the residents, if they are co- okay with the, the way it is, then so be it. If they would like to see that changed, then let's change it, so. You good with any of that, or you have any questions, concerns?
So, I'm fine with the school committee one.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to do an audit, but the problem is, we need the school committee and Westbrookfield on board, and I don't know, I know we don't have the school-
Not, I, I mean, I think the chair was proposing just the, the town paying outright, pay for it outright, so you could do-
But can we, can we do that?
If you wanna pay for it.
Oh. Okay.
They wouldn't have a choice, the town votes for it, says, does it, do it, we want it out.
Interesting, okay, I thought we had to have that buy-in.
Well, that would be from the state auditor, so this would be, you know, you, you know, you're gonna go and say, you know, Warren wants to audit, you know, Warren's portion of their, uh, you know, of their funding of the, of the regional school district, and if you guys wanna pay for it, I guess you could do it.
Huh, okay, I didn't know that was an avenue. So, I mean, what do you think about the DESI thing first?
I think DESI does education, they wouldn't do budget, and I don't know if they'd really say anything on staffing.
Do you, do you have any idea of what kind of audit they would do, or?
Well, I would think that they would address- Well, I would think that they would address, so DESI, they would look at all the programs from, from what I would gather, and they would say that, you know, these are the requirements from the state, you know, for, to fund, to have these programs, and, and these are the requirements that you have to follow in order to maintain your, you know, your accreditation with the state. You know, that would include, you know, maintaining certain levels of staffing to, to have these programs. In terms of auditing of financials, I, I don't know if they would get involved in much of that. But, you know, they would look at the operation, operational aspect of it. Is it being run correctly? Where are some deficiencies? Where, can you improve? I'm sure that they would look at something like that. If they do these types of, you know, analysis like the Department of Revenue does.
But would they look at, we're overstaffing, which is a concern. Are we overstaffing positions or departments or areas? Do we need as many people to do what they do? I know there's areas in the school which absolutely do it, but are we putting the right resources to those locations to support those? You know, we just don't know. I, you know, it'd be interesting.
We could certainly send a letter to DESI and ask them, you know, these questions and see what we get for a response, if the Board so chooses.
Yeah. What do you think? What do you think?
It doesn't hurt to ask, to find out, or to let the public, you know, find out what the public also wants.
Yeah, I'd say check with DESI and see what they can do.
Okay, we'll have a draft, a draft letter drafted up for you guys to review by next week.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
Do you guys have anything else to add?
Uh, no.
No, sir.
Okay.
So we can't vote on this until we settle those two, right?
So that we get all the numbers in and everything?
I'll, I'll update this as well, too.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Once we get all the numbers in and everything, we have the sixth is our final.
Correct.
We close it out, vote on it. All right. Moving on. We did that. And four, review, possible vote, sign, a contract with Guardian Energy Management Solutions for an energy management system at the Warren Community Elementary School. And this is what you've been working on with the school
Correct.
and Guardian.
Yep. So, Mr. Chairman, as, as the Board is aware, the town is a recipient of a Green Communities Grant that, that grant started prior to me becoming the town administrator here. It was in the works with identifying the carbon footprint at the Warren Elementary School and to understand how, how they can reduce their costs of, of heating in the school. And they've partnered with Guardian Energy Management Solutions to, to come up with a plan in which they will be able to make some modifications to existing valves and, 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 in, in units that are in the, that are in the school building at the Warren Elementary School, so that they can change some, some of the parts on them to make them more energy efficient and to install a energy management software system that would regulate all of the rooms and the temperatures for each of the classrooms at the Warren Elementary Center. This is part of a, of a grant from the Green Communities Division, DOE-R, Department of Energy Resources. They are, this, this grant was an award for, for two hundred thousand dollars to the, to the town. And this, oh, oh, this grant will pay for a portion of this energy management system. This has been through a contract, a cooperative contract agreement with MFC, which is the purchasing arm for higher ed. And they have a contract, the contract number is MC twelve dash GO three, that, that the town will be using to, to procure these services and to have purchasing ability under this blanketed contract, cooperative contract. And the town will be responsible for issuing payment to invoice one, two, and three, which is the amount of the grant. And then the remaining portion of this, of this project will be funded through an OBR, an on-bill repayment program set up by National Grid, and a, a utility incentive of forty-eight thousand dollars to, to Guardian for, for this energy management system. So, the energy management system, the total project cost is three ninety-five, nine forty-four. We're going to get two hundred thousand dollars, roughly two hundred thousand dollars. One ninety-five is going to the, is going to the, from the grant, and the OBR, which is going to be a hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine forty-four, will be the responsibility of the school with the hopes that it will, you know, pay for itself with the energy savings that it's going to be providing, plus the energy incentive credit of forty-eight thousand dollars.
And this is just my signature on here?
Yes.
So when you guys do the motion, you're gonna have to authorize me to sign for you? You guys good? You have any questions?
No, I think it's good.
Any questions?
Uh, no, just a comment. This is a wonderful thing that's happening. The school really needs that update of old equipment and getting there. But it's just half of the equation, so, the other half is the building itself, the envelope. You know, there's a lot of heat loss in, in the building itself, so we should keep looking and working towards, you know, savings like this. I think it's a great, wonderful thing for the town. You know, every penny counts.
And as you, as you may recall, it was, it was a difficult transition because we had a change in leadership at the school, and, you know, we had to scramble to get the, the other funding mechanism, right? So the, the, the funding mechanism for the OBR, you know, had to be, you know, through an agreement with the school, because originally they were gonna use Essar funds to, 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 to fund the rest of this project. And their Essar funds were, were used to balance their budget last year. So, you know, this is, this was critical that we were able to get this, this, this five-year, zero percent interest financing for the school with National Grid. So I'd like to thank National Grid for, for stepping up to the plate and working with the town as well.
Okay. Very good. Do you have any other questions?
I don't.
Good.
No, sir.
Motion?
All right, I'll make a motion to approve and have the Chair sign a contract with Guardian Energy Management Solutions for an energy management system at the Warren Community Elementary School.
Second?
All in favor?
Richi Hucker, aye.
Billy Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving on, review and possible vote to sign the, a contract with Vedar Systems, Inc. for the implementation of financial software applications and services.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As, as you may recall, the town has been trying to secure financial software package that would communicate throughout all departments, and particularly the assessors, the treasurer, the collector, and the accountant. And as you know, we've had three different presentations from three different companies. And all of the staff were, were involved in that process to look at these companies. And after much discussion and questions that were asked by several members of the staff, by various companies, the group had, had came together and had recommended that Vedar be selected as the vendor to provide this. Vedar had come together with a, a package in which they would, you know, they have a, a six-year plan that they put together. They are on the state contract, and we could procure the services through the state contract. As you are also aware, the town was a recipient of a community compact grant for sixty-five thousand dollars. And we're going to be using about, about fifty-six thousand dollars of the sixty-five thousand dollars to, to offset the implementation of this financial software. Vedar does not, the, the, the grant will not cover for subscriptions or ongoing fees or costs or, or cloud-based subscriptions. They won't pay for that. But they will pay for the implementation and one-time costs of the, of the system. And fifty-six thousand will be absorbed through the grant from the state. The remaining balance, which would be about forty-one hundred dollars, would be factored into the, the budget for July one, and that's for the cloud subscription for seven, for seven users. And departments would also have, with this particular package, ten full, fu- full-day sessions of, of trainings. Initially, they had proposed seven. We added some additional monies in the, in the grant, and I had recommended to bump the seven to ten, just to give our departments a little cushion, because I, I have experienced when there's a new system that comes into play, that it's going to be frustrating, it's gonna be stressful for the employees, and I understand that it's a learning curve. So to give us and to add some additional protection, and we had the money, I had recommended that we do ten full in-house sessions, and we can get those taken care of through the grant. In the remaining fiscal years, with all of the departments included, for the finances, the assessors, the treasurer, the collector, and the accountant, you're looking at a cost of twelve thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and nineteen cents every year for, for up to the first six, you know, six years. Or five years, I should say, five years. Because the first year you don't pay subscription fees. It's all implementation costs.
And that's fixed for the period?
Fixed, fixed for the period, yeah, for the contract.
Yeah, okay.
And the only drawback to this is that Vedar Systems does not have a modular for building and planning. So, they do have the ability to link and to bridge to other software packages that are out there, whether it be Permitize or Permitlink, or I think there's another one, ClearGov, they have one, you know. They, they, they would provide the, the, the bridge and the link to them, but it's not, it's not built in. They would, they would have to, that would be a separate module. You'd have to pay for it, and you'd have to have them, you know, initiate that in, in the, in the thing, in the system. It doesn't, it's not included in this. What is included in this is also the sewer billing system. Sewer is included in this. I know that Carrie has been a strong advocate to getting software, because her software is gonna be expiring at the end of this fiscal year. The treasurer does not have any software. She does it on a spreadsheet. The accountant has an older system, a DOS system. And somebody at the FinCom meeting last night said, well, DOS is still good, but, you know, it's, 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 it's old, okay?
No, it's not.
So, it's old. It, it's time for them to all have a system. Vedar is used in several communities, neighboring communities. So, you know, I would imagine that as departments, such as Carrie's department and the treasurer's department, the, the accountant's department, and the assessor's department, if they have questions, I'm sure that they could also reach out to neighboring communities, because Vedar is, is, is a system that's well-established throughout the Commonwealth that's used in a lot of communities, municipalities. And that's probably why they're, one of the reasons why they're on the state contract as well. So, it's a decision that, you know, that we have brought to the Board. It, it's taken some time to get here, but I think we're here.
Do we have an idea of the implementation schedule?
Well, I, I know that Vedar's really eager to, to, to start, right? I think they've even, you know, prior to even signing this, they've, they've been trying to reach out to departments to, you know, to give them some advice and to, to do some things. And I said, hey, look, we don't have a signed contract. So, you know, it's up to the discretion of the Board of Selectmen. So, but I think that they're eager to get going. I think they wanna get going. And I think that they're, you know, they wanna, you know, try to fall in line with, you know, fiscal year close and, and understand that. There's going to also be a need to have, you know, L, you know, what the accountant uses, LBA and associates. There's still gonna be a need to have that around for, at, you know, at least, you know, one more fiscal year to have that parallel system there, to make sure we have everything. There's going to be a need to have, you know, the, well, yours is going away anyways.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, there's, there's, you know, that's it.
Well, if hers goes away, does that mean all our tax bills go away?
And that means all the money that comes into the town?
Ah, technicalities.
Come to community meeting day, I'll explain how it works to you.
So, so that's, that's kind of where we are. You know, it, it's, it's tough, because I know that the Board had wanted to get everybody into one umbrella. But there's not, there, there's still money left here. And I can still check with the, with the, with the state to see if I can use it for all, because they said it's for one project. I can, you know, it's a short amount of money that's gonna be left in there. Maybe they'll let me use it for, for the software, for the building and planning as well, and I can, you know, use it as a starting point.
It's one project.
What's that?
It's one project.
Well, yeah, I, I, that's how I would view it as.
We view it that way.
And I, I wanna make sure.
With many layers.
I wanna make sure that the state views it as that as well.
So, I sat in the, the training for this, the seminar, and it was actually a really good system. You know, ultimately, we wanna make sure we can get all the departments together, working together, but this gets us in a good point, and we have to make sure that the... But this gets us in a good point, and we have to make sure that the users buy into it and they want to use it, and they can learn it. And it seems like you've all bought into it. You guys are happy with this system and what it can do. We have to choose something. So, you know, and this still gives us the option to link up, say, Permitize or something, which I like to Permitize, but they're really permits. They're not the financial side of it. You know, and we can still look at that as linking that in there to help with the building and the planning department too, and get building permits online. The contractors and residents looking for a building permit can still do it online. We're just not going to use this system for that fully. Yeah, I think it's a good system. How do you think?
Yeah, well overdue.
Yeah.
It's a wonderful thing.
I know you love the upgrade.
Just for clarification, I have no idea what DOA or DOS means, what it is.
No? No? You?
I never got a chance to.
Your computer died.
Drive operating system or something? Is an OS used?
Disk operating system.
Disk operating.
I could show you right now if you want to see some DOS.
No, no, no. All right.
Don't corrupt his mind.
You guys have no questions?
No, I'm good with it. I think it's great.
Very good.
Happy it's here.
Did you want to say anything, Carrie?
I'm just here in case you guys had questions. If you sign, I'm out.
Do you guys have any questions for Carrie?
No.
Are you happy with it?
I hope to be, you know. I mean, you know, you gotta get the shoes and wear them a little while before you know entirely how happy you are with them, but.
Are you excited?
I am excited. I'm terrified and excited with this.
It's new.
Change is good.
Yeah. All right, let's do a motion.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept the contract with Vedar Systems and authorize the chief, the chair of the select board to sign.
Second.
All in favor.
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dupre, aye.
Aye.
Here you go, chief.
Let me sign it?
Yeah.
Chief, can you sign? You didn't say which chief.
Oh, shoot.
All right. Good, sir.
Thank you.
Move forward. Do they want me to put my title on there or anything?
You should always put your title on there.
I would put, you know, yeah, title, chair.
Because you don't want to be.
Which one did I sign?
Says it right there, title.
That's not the one I signed.
Should be page six. Is there, there may be two sections to sign?
There's no page six. Well, the page six is something else. What do you got?
Eleven and twelve.
Oh, there's ten, yep, and then there's page six. Agreement, engagement agreement.
Yeah, I have it.
Two, two signatures. This is this? Here's that one, that's ten.
Six of six.
Six of six, yeah.
Engagement agreement. Some end users? Right?
Yeah.
I thought I was signing municipality.
Yes, yep.
So two signatures.
Two signatures, two signature pages.
All right. Who's getting this one?
Carrie, can you get it? I should give it to me.
Are you using any copies of it?
Oh, you should write your, who you are.
Doesn't ask.
I know, but you don't want to be signing it as David DeFrain. You want to sign it as the chair of the select board.
You were voted in as the chief tonight.
Yeah, the chief.
The chief chair.
Chief chair.
General chair. I'll give them five stars. All right. Get that done. Okay. Announcement, the special town meeting and annual town meeting warrants. Okay, I'm making an announcement.
Yep.
Okay, so I got to make an announcement. The special town meeting and annual town meeting warrants will close at the Board of Selectmen's meeting on Thursday, April 6, 2023. So please have them all into us before then. Okay, and then warrants and bills.
Make a motion to pay the following warrants. Number eighty-eight payroll, forty-eight thousand, five hundred, twenty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Eighteen, number eighty-nine vendor, forty-five thousand, three hundred, fifty-six dollars and forty-three cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dupre, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Make a motion to pay the following bills. Civic Plus, twenty-six hundred, thirteen dollars and thirty-four cents. KP Law, three hundred, twelve dollars and eighty-eight cents. Rico, hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy cents. WB Mason, hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixteen cents. Verizon, hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. National Grid, fifteen hundred, sixteen dollars and twenty-two cents. Comcast, twenty dollars, thirty cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dupre, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from Feb. second, ninth, and sixteenth.
Second.
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dupre, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Town administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to report that, you know, this week has been a very busy and productive week. We've met, I met with the FinCom last night. We've been going over warrant articles for special town meeting and annual town meeting, as well as all the budget and the budgetary items. It was attended by Chief Lavoy as well. And there's been a very positive discussion, looking at numbers and facts and figures relating to the budget and how we determine, you know, how we fund this budget is critically important. And that process has been continuing on. The FinCom is eager and anticipating a very good session on Saturday with the Board of Selectmen at one. And so we're going to be set up and ready to roll for that when you'll see the entire budget picture together. So we've been fine-tuning it this last, this last week. We're also pleased to report to the board that Jim McKeon, when he secured his emergency management grant, that for the purchase of two trailers, those trailers have now, the payment for those two trailers have been given out. He will be picking up the trailers supposedly tomorrow. Insurance has been taken care of on those. They're going to be registered and insured. Those, that took care of that this week. We are also getting a new police interceptor undercover, right, chief?
Yeah, just black.
Yeah, undercover, for patrol and for special projects. That was funded by ARPA. That finally has come in due to some supply chain issues and shortages with some of the parts for the interior of the cruiser. That has all been done, and it will be delivered tomorrow. And then those two trades, the Fusion and the Taurus, will be going back to the dealer as part of that deal as well. And so we also had met with, and had an executive session today, and I'm pleased to report publicly that three contracts have been settled. We've settled the contracts for the town accountant, the police chief, and the lieutenant. And those contracts will be posted on the website for the public to view, hopefully starting tomorrow. So the, that's the report for this week.
The trailers are for the levy supplies?
Well, one of them is, yeah. He's gotten two. There's going to be two trailers. I also, I wanted to also talk about a little bit of some of the building projects that's been going on here. The new sign has, you know, the frame of the sign has been put in, and the actual sign itself will be coming. I was told that it is ready. They just wanted to get the frame up and make sure it was done correctly. The etching for the doors will be done relatively soon. We have also gotten a new desk in this week for the Board of Health Administrative Assistant, who also started this week, Jessica Clark. We'd like to welcome her to the team. She started this week, and again, thank you to Brianna for all your help and support throughout, throughout the time that she's been here. And she still pops in and says hello once in a while, so it's nice to see her. So Jessica is really excited. She had her first Board of Health meeting last night with her board, and I hear it went very well, and they're working on several issues in that department. As I've gotten several calls on septic issues and septic complaints and concerns with people that are looking to sell their homes, looking to upgrade their systems, looking to change their systems, modify their systems, repair their systems. We are getting, they are going to be getting answered. And, you know, the, our Title V agent, Chrissy Florence, is going to be coming in tomorrow to address some of those situations and making sure that all of the proper documentation is submitted. And that has been critically important. And we're working to make sure that all those Title V concerns have been addressed, because there was quite a few of them, quite a few of them, with the absence of staff there. So we forward them all down to the Board of Health. They're well aware of them. They're working through them. And the, the projects that have been going on inside the building, we are going to be getting our upgrade in our break room equipment very shortly. So that will be purchased very shortly. And we have some additional office furniture coming in to make upgrades to the workstations. And some additional painting is going to be done for the, the whole room has to be painted for the board, for the planning board in the building department, and that should be starting next week. So we're working to get that, that project wrapped up. The painter was in today. He did some touch-up for some of the projects that he was working on last week. We have not finished the payment on that project, so he's got to come back and do some additional work that's required.
Looking good. You know, lots been going on, a lot of improvements. The floors were done in a lot of the offices. Some electrical work stuff that needed to be fixed, and that was taken care of. New desks in town clerk's office, treasurer's office, the accountant's office. So there's a lot going on. And also, another update. Something else that happened, which I'm extremely excited about, is we got the AEDs in the buildings now too. We have eight, the AEDs inside the common area, the hallways. So they're in the center of the hallway, upstairs and downstairs, in a cabinet that's marked for the AEDs. So if somebody is having a cardiac episode, we have the AEDs here to help, you know, shock their heart back into rhythm. And it's literally what it does.
Yeah.
And we do have a lot of our staff trained.
Yes.
To use the AEDs.
Thanks to Paul Sujin.
Another program that we ran here has got all the, pretty much all the employees or most of them.
The ones that wanted to sign up.
Yeah, so a lot of, a lot of them did do it. So a lot of the employees are certified to use the AEDs, and we could probably run another class too, because we do have some new employees now. Maybe we can get them on there, and Paul can help out again. And get everybody up to par. And there's also an AED in the senior center, the highway department. Did they get one?
Yep.
Highway department and sewer department.
Sewer, yeah.
And sewer department. So all those areas, if somebody has a cardiac arrest, there's trained personnel around. And they're also the same ones that the fire department uses. So the technology is, is right there. The pads are swappable, so they can use the same pads on them. So that's definitely an improvement. Thank you for everybody that got involved in that. What else was there? Oh, and the flagpole.
Flagpole, yep.
We were, the rope was replaced on that, and are they new flags? Because they look good.
Yes.
There are new flags on there too. So we have a new American flag and a POW flag. Thanks to who?
The veterans.
Veterans Council?
And the highway department, Mr. Shepard was the one that did the rope, the new rope. Got up there on the ladder and did it, so.
Very good. So a lot of, a lot of improvements. Anything you want to say about that?
No. I think you pretty much covered everything, haven't you?
Yeah, well, there's so much, and it's like, I know I'm probably missing stuff, and you're probably missing stuff.
I miss it, yeah.
Because so much has gone on and so many new improvements. You just, should we add that to your report?
What?
To which report?
It's already.
It is gone.
And it's stacked full from all the stuff that's been going on too.
Well, can we save it for next time?
A lot of changes in town. Well, we didn't add the, well, what did I add? Doing the Vedar software and all that stuff.
That would be for next fiscal year.
Yeah.
Clean up. We did a lot of cleanup.
Yeah.
Lot of cleanup.
Oh, yeah.
And we're still doing, still doing stuff with the police station.
Speaking of that, they are cleaning a lot of stuff out of there. We have a dumpster over here again to clean more stuff. Sylvia Buck received a lot of stuff, historical items that we're moving over here. I did fulfill my obligation of going over there and cutting down the poison ivy. And yes, I did get poison ivy, and I got it all on the inside of my arm and my knuckles and stuff. So I don't know if Chief Lavoy got any, but he was helping me too to make sure I didn't fall in the river when I was trying to cut it. And I got as much as I could out of Lieutenant Early's window. I'm sorry, I didn't see any in your window, but, you know. Everything on the side of the building should die and just fall off now. The fire escape, that's a lost cause. I did try to cut the poison ivy out of the fire escape, and I climbed up on the fire escape, and the thing started vibrating and making a noise. And I'm like, yeah, I'm getting off before this thing comes down. So I got off the fire escape because, yeah, it wasn't worth the risk. But everything, ground level, is cut, so those volumes should come down. Yeah, so.
Good job. Good job.
Thank you. Do you have anything else?
Yep, and Saturday, Jim Dusty worked with the trial court, was here on Saturday. They did some cleaning of the town hall as well. So that, that cleaning, you know, getting some of the books down and condensed in a, in an area. So that was done. They're going to be coming back, from what I understand with Jim, at some point. So that was done and they're gonna be coming back from what I understand with Jim at some point.
A lot of stuff, you know. All right. Did we get any status on the testing, for the stuff down in the basement?
Not as of yet, we were going to walk through a walkthrough, me and Derek. The, the building commissioner was out sick this week, so she's coming back next week. So we're gonna do the walkthrough, we're gonna get that, you know, see if she has any recommendation of some firms that, that we can contact to get that stuff properly tested. And then see what the costs are with that and we'll be back with you with some quotes and estimates on some of the other improvements that should be done over there.
Okay. And in the meantime, nobody's going in that basement, right? All right. Do you have any questions?
I don't.
No, sir.
Right, and you're all set?
Yep.
All right, very good. New business, do we have any new business?
I do not.
Me neither. Old business?
None. Oh, well, actually, employee evaluations?
Yep, so I'm gonna retool that form, just a little bit to add in the cybersecurity. And you'll have that form probably next week.
Okay.
So then hopefully I can get an approval on the form and we can do them the month of June is what I'm, I'm thinking.
Yeah, okay.
That's what the bylaw calls for. And it's quite, usually a quieter time. We'll also have, coming up with you, you'll see that the RFP already went out for the master plan for the Wright's Mills complex, that went out on Monday. So we're, we're, we're gonna have that due back on the nineteenth of April. And so we'll know who, who responded from, from that. And the police feasibility study will be the one that's going out next, within the next week or two.
Okay, very good. Anything else, sir?
No.
Did you have any old business?
No, sir.
So correspondence, we got a letter from, well, an email from Mary Ann Matruski, from Warren Housing. And I did talk with her, we talked for quite a long time. And we discussed many of the concerns of the resident from Warren Housing. And basically, let me see, here, where's the letter? That is number eight. And she just wrote a response reiterating what we discussed. That the boiler and the hot water heaters, those things have been taken care of and the ones that have been taken care of under our contract. And they are being dealt with. They're in the process of hiring an executive director and they're working through that. And without reading the long email, because I literally talked for probably about an hour or maybe longer.
She said about an hour and a half.
Yeah. So there was a lot going on there and again, she addressed a lot of the concerns, they're working on things, they're gonna work better on some of the communication and allowing people to speak in the meetings. But they're trying to also maintain order too, so. And I think she's doing a great job. And she reiterated that she would be getting with us about the technology. She's having that stuff done within the next couple of weeks, she should be having the TV and stuff put in there. And if we could work with them to get the, on Zoom and set that up. I volunteered you.
It will be my pleasure.
Thank you, sir. But yep, we did talk about that and, you know, unfortunately it's not here so we can't really address his concerns directly. But hopefully he comes in again soon, we'll be able to talk more about that. Just kinda keep that in the back of the book, just in case. What else? We also get some correspondence from Jim McKeon. The, due to inclement weather that's forecasted for Saturday, the Easter egg hunt, which is gonna be held at Lucy Stone Park, is postponed until April eighth. Same times, same event, they're just moving it to the
Next Saturday.
In climate weather day because it's supposed to be raining a lot. And that doesn't go well with Easter egg hunts or people wanting to be outside. So next Saturday will be the Easter egg hunt. And if we could just make sure we get that on our website so everyone knows. And do we Facebook post that?
I will with the new, I'm, I'm gonna redo the, the ad so it reflects the new date. People are aware of it.
Okay.
And just post it everywhere.
All right. And then, we also just got one today, from Dario Nardi. And he was talking about going to the articles and Warren residents saw a twenty percent increase in their property tax last year for this year. And concerns about the RFP for the Wright's Mill complex. And concerns about the tax rate. And Waukesha's is what he calls us. Is, I add that our education system in Waukesha's is in decline and we keep throwing good money at a bad problem. Support Pathfinder and Ta- Taskco Tech, we need more tradespeople and jobs pay well. I agree. You know, we do need more tradespeople and Pathfinder does a great job. We're very concerned about the tax rate, we've been very diligent about what's approved this year and working closely with FinCom and, you know, I definitely welcome, welcome everybody to either watch or come to the meeting on Saturday. We'll be speaking more about it with FinCom, with our meeting. And that is at one o'clock here in the municipal building. Depending on the size and the amount of people, we may be able to hold it in this room or we might have to move downstairs if a lot of people do show up. But, you know, we'll make that call when it comes closer. And as far as the RFP for the Wright's Mill complex, talking about, we don't have an RFP, we have the master plan.
Well, I, I don't know what he's, I, I didn't see the email, so I'm not sure what he's talking about.
Going out for an RFP with regards to Wright's Mill is another waste of government funds on a privately owned piece of property, similar to the overlay. Why are we doing so much for an owner who does so little?
So to, to answer that question, it's not, it, it, it's called the Wright's Mills Master Recovery Plan, okay? And to answer that is, it's basing it upon all of the infrastructure that would support anything that would go in there. So it's in the town's interest to have some type of development by somebody at some point to go in there. And this planning assessment would address the deficiencies that are around there, whether it be water, sewer, broadband, roads, bridges, the dam. Anything, anything that's around that facility would be done at, as an assessment, would be done by a planner and can be used as a guide to help the town and whoever the private developer would be at some point, to work together to try to address some of the deficiencies that are public entities, that are public property, not just, you know, inside the complex of the Wright's Mills. It's called the Wright's Mills Master Recovery Plan because we, of course, it's in the town's interest to see that property recover at some point.
And that creates jobs for the community, which increases the tax revenue for the res-, the town, which is well needed in our community because again, if we're really concerned about taxes, our residents cannot foot the bill for all the stuff that goes on within a community, between schools and, you know, public safety, highway and everything. It's, there's so much that's required to do all that. And we need to have business in the community to take off some of that burden. And the Mill complex is a, a large developable property that can be used for that purpose. But we're only given the mechanism outside and it's not just for them, it helps our residents. So if we're fixing water lines or, you know, sewer, sewer lines or other things like that, upgrading the wastewater treatment plant, that's helping our residents and that's helping our community. And that's through EDA grants and other things that will open up by doing this. This opens up a whole new level of a grant process for our community by doing this. You know, and that's because the EDA wants to see development within small communities like that, so they're willing to give money to do this stuff.
And so that was, that was, in order for us to do this project, we went after a grant through the federal government, the EDA. And the town only has to contribute a small portion, thirty percent. And the rest will be, you know, will be, you know, paid for by the federal government.
And we used ARPA, so the taxpayers didn't pay any of that.
Nobody paid anything for taxes.
Yeah, I, I don't understand the objection, he's complaining about the tax rate, but then he's complaining about us doing a business development activity that will lead to more grants, so it's, it's kind of contradictory.
I guess we'd have to get him in here to ask him that. If he has these concerns, he's more than welcome to come to a meeting and we will address these concerns. Maybe he's not seeing the big picture with this, you know.
Same with the overlay districts, I don't see how that, I mean, the overlay, I don't think the overlay district costs any money. It's just an opportunity for two areas in town to have additional business activities.
And as far as voting, again, whoever shows up votes for these things. Voting on articles and school budget and omnibus, the residents vote on this stuff, they approve it. So when you go to a town meeting and you go to an annual or special, it's presented in front of you as a resident or the residents and they're the ones that vote for these things. We may not necessarily agree with some of the things, but, you know, the town votes for them or puts them in front and they pass. So more residents should be showing up and I encourage everybody in the town, I would love to see all five thousand residents show up to vote. You know, that would be amazing. It would be amazing if we can get more than a hundred and fifty to show up and vote. So just remember, when people complain about these things passing, it's because literally only a hundred people showed up and made a decision for five thousand people in the town. I highly recommend, if you have concerns, show up at the town meeting and vote. You have a say. That said.
That's an excellent segue into
I don't know if you want to read that more.
The next item. Yeah, I did read this. Derek, I don't know if Derek's seen it.
Okay. Do we have any more correspondence? That was it, right?
No correspondence.
Did you have anything?
No, sir. No, just Mr. Allen Gina, he'd asked to be placed on the
Yep. We did him, so he's all set. So correspondence from, budget from Quay Bog Regional School District?
Yep, so, yep, this is just their updated budget.
Their new one?
It's the same, it's the same one that was sent, that I sent, I forwarded to you guys.
So they're looking for, what, for an above minimum contribution now?
One point two four six four six two.
So they're looking for one million two hundred and forty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars and eight cents. So. See if we can get them to knock that eight cents off.
Yeah, that would be generous.
We will be discussing this more on Saturday.
I was just wondering what kind of increase that was.
Okay, so comments and concerns, do you have any comments and concerns?
I've been concerned that that's a hundred and thirty-eight percent increase, that's my concern.
Yeah, I think we're all concerned about that.
But other than that, no.
All right. Do you have any comments and concerns, sir?
No, sir.
Mr. Farrar?
No, sir.
Do we have any comments and concerns from anybody in the public? Mr. Condrand, sir?
John Condrand, I got two. First of all, there have been some people that asked me about these grants, why they're not going into the general fund to lower tax rates. I tried to explain to them, grants for whatever department or use, a specific use. And they can only be used for that use. You know, like when we needed an ambulance, you know, maybe some of the equipment for the police department, it was specific use. You can't just take the leftover and dump it into the general fund, it has to be used for that department.
Yes.
The other thing I'd like to talk about is the mass shooting we had this week. And for twenty-five years, after every mass shooting, there's been another one. They call it a copycat. I know that the police department has been training, just in case. And we hope that there's never a just in case. But if you don't have access to the school, this building used to be a school. If you were to come in through the gym, you clear the first floor, you clear the second floor, you get to your special room. Part of training. It's not that we have to ask the school, oh, can we train there that week?
We do train at the school.
They train at the school, yeah.
Yeah, but.
And they always have a presence at the school. And in the recent years, we've made a lot of upgrades to their capabilities. You have new patrol rifles, optics on those rifles to increase your efficiency. Along with a lot of other new, new vehicles. They got a new simulator upstairs for training purposes to, to build their proficiency with dealing with situations like that. So there's been a lot of increases and also, they've been working really well with the school on helping to develop better practices at the school for protecting students. We've also made some changes with teacher habits because teachers were leaving doors open. Now the police department spots checks doors to make sure that they're not left open or unsecured. And I know Adam Lavoy goes through during public meetings and, well, not public meetings, but events at the school and tells them to close doors. So they have to close doors and stuff. So that's being reiterated and over and over and over to make sure the safety of the students and staff at the school is the utmost priority. the safety of the students and staff at the school is the utmost priority. Uh, and they've been doing an amazing job. And we're definitely way ahead from what we were a few years ago, right?
Well, the main thing is that no parent should ever have to bury their child.
Absolutely not. It's the worst thing you could ever do.
Now recently I, I noticed that they've had, uh, call-in false alarms for shooters or bombs. I believe Palmer recently had one of those.
Hmm.
So we have to assume that eventually it's gonna happen here. You, you just, gentlemen, I have to make a decision. Do a total lockdown and search or move everybody into a parking lot?
That's something I'm not gonna go on video. You can't get it staffed with security and what, what it is.
We have procedures for that.
I'll tell you right now, those are very common. They happen very frequently, a lot more than what's reported. And they're happening everywhere in every community. The problem with them is sometimes they're digital calls or an AI call.
Yeah.
Artificial intelligence, um, call. And they come from foreign countries or numbers that aren't, are untraceable. Um, and it, it's very difficult to trace them. I can tell you right now, the school and the town take them very serious and treat them as they were real until we know otherwise. Um, and I have the utmost confidence in our police and our fire to handle those situations, um, in an event. Um, and again, we prepare constantly to make sure that the students and the staff are protected. And a lot of that goes on, um, upgrades to schools. And those are being looked at too, and if not already been made. Um, one of the things we've learned is a lot of these school shooters that actually carry through with it don't like hardened targets. They look for an easy target.
Yeah.
And we cannot be an easy target. We need a police department such like we have
Yeah.
that's capable and has the equipment to respond to something like this. And God forbid they ever have to.
It's like in the one that happened this week where the woman shot the glass out of the front doors. Maybe we oughta invest in Plexiglas doors.
Plexiglas isn't gonna do anything.
No.
No. But there's other technologies and those technologies, if they're not already implemented, are being researched. And that's as much as I can give on the school safety without giving out, uh, what we would call tradecraft.
Yeah, well.
Because we don't want the bad guys to know what we can and can't do.
I do know that the federal government was planning, uh, had, had to outgrats for hardening school targets.
And we'll take that money and we'll use it wisely for our schools. We welcome any funding that the government can give us to do a better job. But again, it happens. It's the worst possible thing anybody could go through and a community can go through. And I, my, our hots go out to, you know, you know, the, the students that have lost their lives and the teachers and the janitor. And, you know, again, all we can do is prepare for the worst and wish for the best. And, you know, I, I have the utmost faith in our police department to handle that situation if one should ever arise. Um, and I can tell you right now, from working in law enforcement, when that call goes out in a town, in a community, every single police officer, trooper, sheriff, agent, everybody will be here as fast as you can be and, um, you know, deal with it. So, uh, again, without giving out what our capabilities are, you know, we're still looking at it.
Well, the chief could rest assured that I would back him up any day.
So, did that answer your questions, sir?
Yeah.
Mary Ann. Um, anybody else have any questions? Yes?
Ray Capco, resident. Uh, just a quick comment and maybe it's a question. Um, I'm not so sure that DESI would be an impartial evaluator of the school. And so just consider other possibilities, other independent, um, agencies. I know it might be hard to find something like that. I don't have anything to offer you right now. I'm gonna do a little research when I get home. But, um, yeah, I'm just curious if they'd actually be impartial. You might be inviting a problem instead of a solution to have those books opened up by them. Because I highly suspect their answer would be that, no, they need twenty more staff to do what they, what DESI's gonna want them to do. But, so just a comment about that, that consider the possibility for a more independent agency to take a look at their, at, at the school.
Okay. I totally agree with that.
Yeah, I agree with that too, because DESI's.
Yeah.
It's the fox, it's the fox watching the chicken coop.
Yeah.
So to speak.
Yeah, they, they have their agendas.
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't need to send delivery?
Well, I, I wouldn't, I'm not saying.
See if they can do that.
Okay, all right. Like, like Selectman Belize said, it never hurts to ask.
Okay.
Uh, but, but just, just consider, just consider that.
The idea is if somebody comes and asks you, did you ask them? We say, yes, we did. You know, that's why.
Okay. We'll have it drafted. Not to make more work for you, Jim, but. No, no. Kind of a bold answer, losing might be appropriate.
He doesn't have enough to do. He's one of the hardest working men in this town. Um, so do we have any more comments and concerns? Chiefs?
Nothing on Zoom.
Anybody on Zoom?
Nope.
Comments and concerns? Yep. Um, I have a comment. Um, I ask people to please clean up the trash at the end of their driveways and along the roads safely, if you can do that. And I please ask for nobody to dump large ba- trash bags full of diapers on the train tracks anymore. Because I really don't wanna clean up diapers off of train tracks anymore. That was pretty disgusting. So I cleaned up the trash that was going into, um, in West Warren, along the tracks there, the strip, before you take a left onto South Street. Though all those trash bags that were there, yeah, they were full of diapers.
Nice.
Dirty diapers. So, please don't do that ever again. Um, you know, let's respect our community and keep it clean. I'm dedicated. I didn't realize what I was picking up till I got involved, so. Um, so yes, let's clean up our community. And speaking of that, are we looking at a cleanup day for the town? Yeah. We could probably start looking at that, maybe work with highways?
Or border health?
Border health?
Yeah, border health and blaster.
Did they?
And, I read, do shredded again?
Well, I'm talking about like going out, clean up trash on the sides of the road with, with bags. Yeah.
Yeah. It's probably not for another month or two, right?
Well, you wanna get out there before the poison ivy really gets out there too. Cause I don't wanna get poison ivy more than I already have it, so.
A lot of communities do it around Earth Day and April.
Yes, yes, yeah.
You definitely wanna do it.
Start looking at it.
You wanna do it before Memorial Day.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't want all the trash all over the ground. Not that we have a lot of it in our community, right? Some towns, it's really bad.
But we do.
We're doing, we get some and it happens. People, something blows out of somebody's car when they go into the dump or whatever. You know, it happens, but let's get it cleaned up and see if we can get a day. You know, you can look into, you know, whoever's doing that. We can start announcing that. And then again, with a reminder that we're not doing the Easter egg hunt this Saturday. It is next Saturday, so if anybody missed that. And then they are still doing the Second Chance Animal Services Vaccine Clinic. And that is Saturday, April first. And that's from nine AM to twelve noon at the Highway Barn. And they will be giving vaccines, uh, Distemper Parvo Microchip. And you can also register your dog. Uh, the town clerk will be there, um, registering your dog. And the ACO will be there to answer questions too. So, okay, all right. Um, that's it? Oh, next date? Next meeting is, um, April first. And that is one PM. That's with FinCom. And then we have an April fourth meeting and that's at six thirty. That's a school budget. That's at the school. Um, that's our meeting with the school budget, um, committee. And our regular meeting is gonna be April sixth and that is six PM. So we got a lot of meetings coming up. And.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufray, aye. We are adjourned.